I would like to ask for your guidance and wisdom as you make decisions for the betterment of our community as a whole over the next day, year, weeks, and so on. With your name and guidance and wisdom, amen.
Let we testify of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here. 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 Here.
Well, for those who, if I could just remind everybody, if you'd be so kind when you speak, make sure you get your speakers on, make sure you turn your microphone on, it would help. For those that happens in here before, I'd like to draw your, if you don't have a copy or written agenda, there should be some back here, the back to take, which you like to grab one. I'd like to draw your attention to the meeting procedures. As the public may address the specific agenda items of the city of America, recognized by the mayor, please state your name. And after this, the amendment remarks for three minutes or less, out of respect to city employees, and requests that any compliance officials using the employee not be allowed to public meetings. Concerns about our employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or a mayor, and an individual in violation would be cleared out of the board. So we'll begin with the consent agenda, we'll go back up a little bit. The current Coffee Open Meetings Act of Nebraska is supposed to involve a back in the country. Now, the consent agenda, all matters in the consent agenda are considered by the city council through the city, and will be enacted by one motion, and the city council member may however remove an item from consent on request. All right, item number one, approved minutes of July 7th, 2020, this is a short one.
We approve minutes of July 7th, 2020. We probably had it when we didn't have to use buttons.
That's right. All right, regular agenda, closed session to discuss personal potential litigation if necessary. Item number one, oh, where we did, sorry, item number two, a resolution proving claims and authorize the issuance of two warrants at ATC Group Services LLC in the amounts of $2,692 and $650, a warrant to Tulsa Inc. in the amount of $491,363.99, and a warrant to Midland's Contract Inc. in the amount of $64,196.38 to pay approved claims and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number 3874 relating to warrant financing passed and approved on May 21st of 2013.
That we would approve the claims and issue the warrant, or issuance of four warrants as presented in the materials.
Jim.
Jim. Rebuttoning now.
Item number one. Item number three, accept certificate of completion and assessment schedule for street improvement district number 326 on Philip Avenue from Jefferson Street to Cottonwood Street and set board of legalization for August 4th of 2020.
I move to have the council accept certificate of completion and assessment schedule for street improvement district number 326. Quick question. Terry, is that, or this is all the city, we, we can potentially waive this, is that right?
We're a city as a board of equal. So with that amendment, I would suggest. We make separate motion, whichever. And then, actually, the same also for item number four.
Is there any pros and cons of waiving it versus not waiving it, or is just, there's no point in doing it?
There's no reason it can be, there's no way it's going to protest.
Makes sense.
Second.
Item number four, accept certificate of completion through the assessment schedule for sewer extension district number 346 on Walker Road and Newbury Access, hence north to the south side of Commerce Drive, hence east, north and northwest around the Newbury Access and I think interchange, crossing the Newbury Access and ending approximately 100 feet north of the center line of Palanquin Drive and set board of legalization progress for.
I move to have the council accept the certificate of completion and the assessment schedule for sewer extension district number 346. And waive setting the board of. Not in the notes, Terry.
Outside the body.
All right, item number five, discussion on ordinance number 4036, amended to chapter 151 Housing Maintenance and Auctioning Code, section 151.001 through 151.999 of the municipal code of cities. And I should remind you, this is just for information only, yes, sir?
Can I go ahead and just explain it first, and then, just to kind of give you what we're presenting, and then we come back, I'll give you a little time to think of more questions. Okay, so, what you have in front of you is a copy, I'm gonna go through it a little bit. So, we, we all know that we've been working on this adoption of changing some housing regulations, housing inspections, those type of things for several months now. It started quite a while ago, and then we got to a point where a group was put together that was gonna go through this and, and look at it. So you've already seen kind of a first draft, now we're back to kind of the second draft. So we just want to give you some information, make sure all of you understand what's going on with the, the changes that are gonna be made. We're gonna go to planning commission as a, again, another informational type item next week, and then back to city council for second reading on the ordinance, and then hopefully approval with what's going on. So just to kind of give you a little bit of background, a group of us were put together, Lawrence Ostendorf served on the committee, Judy Peterson, Dave Hahn, George Lewis, and then we did attempt to get a contractor, but being that this is the summertime, it's everybody's busy season, it's really difficult to do that. We did speak with one for a little while, and kind of gave us some input on his thoughts in this update of the property maintenance code. So what you have in front of you, the first 33 pages, I believe, is what our document read, and then it shows the strikeouts, what we're proposing to strike out of the current ordinance, and what we're proposing to add into the ordinance, or add into the ordinance. The next pages, one through, one through 12, is how the ordinance would actually come to you at the next city council meeting, if everything is approved and, and everybody likes what they're reading. That would be the ordinance that would be approved, that's the section that would be codified. Now, behind that, one of the other tasks that the group came up with was to give everybody kind of some knowledge on how the procedures work. So we have SOPs, or standard operating procedures, attached to the back of that. That, we have no desire as the committee or as the group to codify any of those things. Those are just to give everybody some information on the standard operating procedure and what we go through, the building inspectors, what they look at, what some of the co-compliance officers will look at when we go through and do some of these different tasks. Also attached to those standard operating procedures, you're gonna see like an inspection checklist. If we get called out to go do a inspection on maybe somebody had, is upset with their rental unit, they want us to go do an inspection, we have a set of standard operating procedures attached to that as a checklist of everything that we check when we go through that rental unit, or a multiple dwelling, or anything like that, what we're, what we're going through. Also, for some people that are visual, more like me, there are several flow charts that again gives you a little bit of an idea of how the process really works. One of the things that people were really concerned with was environmental type factors, because when you look at our old ordinance, outside health inspector, we don't have a health inspector, we have a building inspector. So when it comes to environmental issues, things like maybe black mold, something like that. What would happen in that instance is our building inspectors are not certified for those types of things. We would call in West Central, we would have them help us out, they have access to equipment to do testing, they have access to different types of sources. So that's just something else that would help us out with some of those inspection things. And what we're proposing here is basically adopting the International Property Maintenance Code 2018. It goes along with all of our other codes that we have adopted, the International Building Code, which is 2018 version, International Residential Code, International Mechanical Code, all 2018 version. And so this kind of just coincides with it. We are not proposing to do anything any differently than what we already had in our code, because these things we were doing. It's just getting rid of that health inspector name, putting in the building inspector, making the building inspector and the development department responsible for administration of this code. And when we address development department, that means myself, two co-compliance officers, the two building inspectors, even the building permit that's required needed. So we have the ability to administer this code the way that we need to do that. It does seem a lot more intensive, but it's just spelled out a lot better than the way our code was. Our code was really vague, it would say something like, you know, you inspect the stairs. This tells you specifically how they're supposed to be, what they're supposed to look like, that sort of thing. So, I did ask Dave on building inspector, Judy Peterson is here, Lawrence Ostendorf is here. If you have any questions, I'll probably have to bring some of them up to help me out, but we'll try and answer whatever. Yes, sir?
Okay. So, question real quick, I know when we do like the building codes and things like that, it affects people's insurance usually, and stuff like that, right? Or I remember during one of our discussions in terms of like standards and stuff like that, take back to that end.
I suppose it could.
Is there anything like, that's going to impact, when you start talking about rental, changing, I guess, from some, you know, written code to, you know, this, is that gonna cause, I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out, like, is that gonna cause huge, I mean, is there, beyond just like this checklist here that kind of like says 404.7, you know, and stuff like that? Like a good, did you guys manufacture something, I guess, what I'm trying to get to? That way, somebody who owns rentals, you know, whether it be, you know, we have like, one, two, three, four, I mean, several people in here that own rentals. So, you know, like, that they can go through it and like be able to self-check themselves.
Oh, yeah, definitely. They can take the International Property Maintenance Code, and it's available, I believe, I did put the link in materials, they can click on there, find the code, and they can go down through there and see if they're.
Was it readable though, like the layman? I mean, like, I'm reading it as.
Most of it, yes, I think it's very, very readable.
I haven't really gone through it yet, to know, but. I'm just worried that like people like, oh, I have a rental, and then they're gonna come, they're gonna have a tenant that says, you know, my, a window or whatever isn't, my door or whatever, right? You know, there's always gonna be squabbles between landlords and tenants, this is the way it goes. But, you know, that the landlord's like, you know, this is what it says, this is what I'm following, you know, right here, and it's, it's easy for everybody to understand, I guess.
And one of the things that I didn't include in your packet, and I should have, is we came up with a responsibilities, it's a little pamphlet, and I think you guys may have seen it earlier, but it's a pamphlet on what the tenant responsibilities are and what the landowner's responsibilities are. Because there is a difference, when you look at things like investigations with rodents, if you're in a multiple dwelling, if it is, if it is one unit, then that's gonna be the renter's issue. If it's the entire complex, then it gets into where it's the landowner's issue. So some of those different things, and that's what people really need to be aware of, and that's kind of our job to educate some of those individuals as to what is the responsibility of the landlord versus what is the responsibility of the tenant.
Is the things that are changed, are they significantly different than what we have now, in terms of beyond just verbiage and where it's coming from? I mean, is it significantly different coding than what we had before that people were used to?
Um, there may be, let me grab Dave, there may be a few things, I don't feel like it's a significant difference, but he probably has a better thought on it.
I know where you're going.
I need to stop landlords with, you know, now you're gonna need to put $2,000, or $5,000, or $10,000 in your apartment or house, or whatever, before you can rent it back down, you know, and stuff like that.
I, I, I see where you're going, I mean, you've.
Whether or not certain days.
We actually went through this code line by line, we spent actually quite a bit of time on it, and we took out things like plumbing and, and those. I mean, we took that stuff out, well, that's not really what we're looking for. Obviously, it's a maintenance thing, it's important, I'm not saying that, but it's probably not something we wanna try to regulate. We took out, oh, there was some verbiage about, you know, spalling concrete and damaged bricks and those type of things, and we took that stuff out because it's.
Good luck with treeless.
It doesn't really lead to, I mean, if you got enough of it, it'll lead to structural damage, but that's really not what we're looking for. We were trying to preserve some things, but take care of more of the, you know, if we got a fence tipping over, or we've got weeds, which we do now, junk cars, those type of things. I mean, it kind of wraps it up into a, into a meatloaf package, we had most of that stuff already.
It looks like it's mostly HVAC stuff, to me, you know, like, does it have a toilet? I mean, literally, it's like a toilet, you know, like, so those things are working amenities, you know, and that kind of thing, right?
Well, and the other thing you gotta remember, the code that we, we get, spend some time on, is we have to have the right rights. So if I, if I knock on your door and I say, you know, I think you have a problem inside, and you ask me, I mean, I've gotta, I've gotta take that legally and prove that I need to be in there before I need to go in. So there's, I mean, we, we spent a lot of time on right of entry, because we can't just blast through the door and go through.
You're required to do, do multi, multi units every once a year, I believe, right? So anybody that has, was it four plus or more?
Just three or more.
Three or more, three or more.
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember, it's been a while.
Three or more units, we do those annually. And generally, we don't have a lot of problem. On those, we ju, we don't go through every unit again, we do a spot check on them, you know, we take, maybe, depends, I guess, what facility you're at, if I'm at a facility that's got 10, I like 5, 4, you know, 4, 3, 4, 5, it just depends, I guess, what, what time allows and what problems we're finding. We start to find problems, we may look at a few more.
And if some of these things don't apply to a place, such as, let's say they don't have laundry facilities inside the, the house or whatever, you know, the dryer vent's just gonna be what? They're not gonna be required to put one in or anything like that, right?
That's correct.
You know, it's on your checklist, I just want to make sure, right, you know? You know, like, there, like, is that a wall for the flashing in?
Yeah, and, and a lot of that stuff applies back to those on stairs, and there's some exceptions that go along with handrails, you know, heater, those type of things. But it's, it's basic code stuff, really, that shouldn't be there. Anyway, I mean, a dryer vent, if you put it in, it should be right, and probably shouldn't be full of lint, otherwise, you know, damage gets a call.
Yeah. Is all this extra work gonna be too much for you and, I assume, Norm to do? Or are you looking to having to hire another building inspector?
Depends on how you want us to administer it. If we administer it the way we are right now, we're fine. If you expect us to have a housing department, and that is their focus every single day, then we're gonna be horrible. Does that answer your question?
It does.
The one thing I do want to go back to with right of entry, and it kind of is right of entry. One of the things that we talked to with one of the contractors is they were a little bit afraid of, what if I call you for a water heater inspection? Does that give you the right to come into my place and go through the entire thing? No, that is not what we're going to do. Now, we can't ignore things, if Dave goes in and he's going in to inspect the water heater, and he opens the front door, and the front door falls off, you can't walk away from that. But no, are we gonna go through the entire house? No, not unless there's something obviously wrong.
Popper seat law, right?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, there you go.
There we go.
Better word, yeah.
Well, I, I had a question. When we, we addressed this once, we addressed this once before, if I recall, we voted on it. This is not what we voted on initially, if I'm not mistaken, because there've been some additional modifications made to it. So, do we need to rescind our previous vote?
I don't think it matters, number one, we're back to first reading, anyway, this is just information tonight. Number two, I don't think it's a substantial modification, which, substantial modification is the legal standard. Someone in the I F B holder, but I don't believe it's substantial enough to rescind any vote. And it doesn't matter anyway, because we're back to first reading, so.
From the perspective of, of your inspections, Norm, which properties give you the most concern? Multiple, multifamily units, or single family dwellings, or duplexes, or, which, which one are you most concerned about?
Could you put the microphone now towards you?
That's a hard question to answer. The multifamily units, I've done those inspections probably for the last 15 years. We typically find, if they have a health inspection, or if they have a maintenance person, we don't have a lot of problems with them. It's typically, they'll have a manager, they'll have a maintenance man, those, we don't generally have a problem. We don't generally have a lot of problems with any of the multifamilies. And I think this, this code takes it, takes it one step further, so it's, if we can address junk cars, which we didn't do before, we, we can address fences, we can address. You've got the compliance gals that take care of, you know, weeds and junk and that type of stuff. It's just another tool in the toolbox, really, of course, to monitor a property that we have trouble with.
So, you know, it's, it's my, it's my understanding that this addresses not single family units, but more than three, is that correct?
It does both.
It does both. The multi-dwelling portion of it is an annual inspection, but it lets us actually look at any, any property in town, residential or commercial.
Whether it's, but it must be some type of a rental property?
No, it does not have to be a rental property.
So you have the, you would have the right under this to come in and inspect my home?
With your permission.
With your permission.
Unless, unless it's some sort of a emergency, if Dave happens to drive by and he can see the sidewall of your house falling in, then it would give us some leniency to go in. Other than that, without you inviting us, no.
Judy, you and I had a conversation this week pertaining to this, and, and I believe you told me that when this thing kind of reared its head a few years ago, you recommended to the administration at that time, mayor, whoever that was, and I don't think you recall, and I certainly don't know, that you recommended that the term health inspector be excised from the code, and that responsibility be morphed into the responsibility of the housing.
Yeah, I did, and that was at least a year and a half to two years ago, yes.
What's changed between now and then that causes us to think that we have to redo our whole code? Why can't we, keep it simple, we've had a code on the books for a long time, why can't we remove the term health inspector, with the line through, and move it over to housing inspector? And move those responsibilities over to.
Well, the only thing I can tell you there is that was a suggestion that was done over a year and a half ago, things always change. You know, people change, things change, conversations change. I think keeping it, I think the biggest thing is keeping it in conformance with the rest of the codes. We've already adopted the International Building Code, the International Residential Code, you know, the mechanical code, and we're in the 2018 Fire Code. I mean, it's, it's everything, so why not, you know, the, the question goes back to why not keep it in conformance with everything else? All of this goes back and references another code, you know, in 2018, I D C or I R C or whatever. So, a, a reason to keep them together, and honestly, yes, I can see where you're going, it would have been much easier to do that. We've spent hours going through this and making this the way that we felt it needed to be. So, yeah, I mean, I don't, I, I'm not gonna say I never said that, because I did, I totally said that, but things have changed, and I just think it's good to be in conformance with the rest of it.
You made a comment that things have changed, and this is something that I mentioned to you on the phone. People change positions, people change jobs, just because your idea of how this needs to be implemented today may change when somebody else takes your seat. And this is a concern that I have, that we may have somebody that, I hate to use the word wingman, but maybe that's the word to use, that, that maybe works with the clientele to try, try to correct the problem, instead of bringing the heavy arm of government in and forcing control. I don't think that's what we're about as a community. But it does concern me, especially when I see what's going on in our country today. And we have a lot of people in positions of power, from my perspective, that are exercising authority that they have no legal right to exercise. And so that's one of my concerns. Regarding the, the I D C, and you and I talked about this as well, we have not adopted the 2018 Energy Code.
That is correct.
Not yet. I, I, I spoke with one of my coworkers today, that has been adopted by the state. And if it has not, if, if the jurisdiction has not adopted a code, a building standard, then it automatically reverts back to the state standard, if I understand it correctly. I learned today that the new iteration, the 2018 iteration of the I D C Energy Code may very well eliminate the possibility of steel building construction being used, or buildings that maintain a winter temperature of 72 degrees, and a summer temperature of 74 degrees, just because of the nature of the construction, the additional insulation cost, the roof structure's gonna have to be changed, instead of using the screw-down roof, we're gonna have to go to the standing seam roof, which is gonna increase the plastic construction. These are some of the ancillary costs that concern me when we start adopting these codes. And I've heard so many times, when I go to meetings, it's just too expensive for people at Mark Flat to compete with building costs. Our costs are so much higher than everybody else's, and this has something to do with that. You, you mentioned too that it references other parts of the I D C. I'm not a lawyer, don't want to be a lawyer, but I've read these codes enough to know that they do reference other codes. And unless you as a person have the, the time and the inclination to research all of these various little bunny trails that you have to go down, it becomes virtually impossible to ferret all this out. And, and the only way sometimes. And the only way sometimes it gets ferreted out is either through the courts or the contractor acquiesces and goes ahead and submits to how the building inspector or the administrator reads the code. So that concerns me. The other thing that concerns me really too is the rights of the tenant, excuse me, the rights of the landlord. The landlord, this is his property, these are property rights. And it concerns me that government is impinging on the property rights why did that individual be able to use his property as E O C C spit? In the market, in the rental market, it's a competitive market. And there's people out there that can't pay $700, $800 a month for rent. So if we go out there and force some of these landlords to spend $800, $1500, $40,000 on rental, bring it up to a code, now all of a sudden the house that was rented for $600 a month may be rented for $800 or $900 a month. So the family that had been buying it and renting it for $600 a month, they don't have the money to spend $800 or $900 a month. So where are these people going to live? And you mentioned to me a story of something that happened here in town, I think fairly recently. About an older gentleman that lived in a house that apparently was in kind of bad shape. I think he said it had vermin and bad bugs and other sort of things. And anyway, it was determined that this probably wasn't a good place for him to live. And this gentleman apparently had some other family members that were living with him. And I don't know who you mentioned that helped him, but somebody helped him find another place where they could, where he could live. The other place unfortunately didn't allow the rest of the family members to live there. So he chose to not live in that other facility because his children, grandchildren, were not able to live there. Another location was found for this man to live in. But I believe the same thing came up, that the grandchildren were not able to live there. There was another reason, but I think that's what it was. When it all boiled down, the people were going to end up living where they were living before. So the reason I bring that story up is people are going to live where they want to live. Some people can afford to live in nice homes, some people can't afford to live in nice homes. But part of the American dream is you work hard, you save your money. Instead of living in a $600 a month house, you can move up to a $900 a month house. But we need to have those lower threshold housing units for the people that can't afford to pay the high cost for high rent. And I'm concerned that if we implement some of these standards, we're going to be forcing that lower market, that lower tier renters out of business.
Yeah. Judy addressed that portion of it.
Sure, absolutely. Judy Peterson, 411 Sandpiper Way. Specifically to your concern, Ed, what we are actually finding is that many of these places that truly are not, should not be inhabited, actually are renting for the higher cost. I think you'd be amazed to see some of the places in this town that are renting for $750, $800 a month and the condition that they're in. I agree with you, we don't want to burden the landlords. But they also have an obligation to their tenants. And if they don't want to bring their place up to standard, then the place doesn't get rented. I think that's their choice. And if they do bring it up to standard and they can rent that place, market is going to determine what rate is going to be okay. Right now, unfortunately, we have a number of people who are living in conditions that are really sad. It's really unfortunate what is happening. And I think we've seen with our last two housing studies that we do have some reason to be addressing this, to make it clear what the code is and to make it enforceable. And I think that's what the obligation is. I think some things have changed recently. You asked why now? I think some things that were a bit of a deterrent have changed. We know that we were having resistance or kind of a backup in the legal department. We've got some different things in that area now going forward so that we can address these things as the development department finds them. I think that's very good. I know that the mayor and Mr. Kibben have made it a priority to see that these things are being addressed. And it's all about getting the right thing in place that allows for the city to look like and be what we want it to be. And I think that that's what this is about. Judy did a great job of bringing us the information that we needed. She had things from other communities, what Carney was doing, what Hastings was doing. I know, Ty, you had a concern that Carney just adopted it without any amendments to it. So we really thought about that, how to really not burden those landlords and not burden those property owners too much and yet still create a safe environment for our residents to live. So I think that was really the focus. I think at least my personal goal is that in three or four years when we do the next housing study, that we'll start to see that trend changing and that we have started to make a difference on impacting those properties that are now being considered substandard. So, thank you. And I appreciate, I want to say I appreciate Mayor Livingston and Mr. Kibben for giving us the opportunity to do this. It takes some time, but I appreciate that we had the opportunity to do it.
Councilman Riker, I'd just like to address one of your points about the Energy Code. So I believe what we've done here with the International Property Maintenance Code is the same procedure that we would follow in adopting any code. Go through it line by line and those items within those codes that are over restricted, they're going to end up costing residents of this community more money. We need to strike those and do what makes sense. Certainly, we wouldn't want to impact the structural integrity or the mechanical systems and facilities. But just as a aside, that's exactly what this group did over the past four weeks was to go through what makes sense for this community as it relates to this code. The same, in my mind, the same procedure will take place when we adopt the 2018 Energy Code. And I'm not 100% sure how Nebraska works, but where I came from, we had a certain period of time before we had to adopt the newest version of the code. And if we didn't adopt it, we brought it back to your municipality's code during that time. And then if the time lapsed, then you were required to follow the state codes.
I have a couple of comments yet to make, but that's okay.
Sure, go ahead.
It's my understanding that Nebraska is one of two states that's adopted the I B C. I'm not sure why we did it, but there's 48 states that didn't. And that says something to me. The other question I had for you, Judy, if we adopt this and we move these responsibilities into the housing director's, housing inspector's responsibility, I think you said something about we don't have the testing equipment to test for black mold.
The things that are environmental type related, yeah. We would have to reach out to a contractor, something like that. West Central District Health does have the ability to do lead-based paint testing, things like that. We do also have contracts with another entity. It's C S I with our housing on our occupied rehab that does some other environmental type testing. So if we were ever to get into a situation where we looked in and we could identify mold or something that is beyond our expertise, we would call in or, you know, ask for assistance from some of those other entities.
How does that change if we just move those responsibilities over to the housing inspector as opposed to adopting the I B C code? It's not going to change, I mean, the city's not going to have the equipment to do the inspection.
Okay, so you're talking if we would just have went back to a year ago, what we proposed to striking the health inspector?
Exactly. What is?
What's the difference?
How does that change whether we give that responsibility, not responsibility, technically hire a third party to do that inspection?
We would have still done the same thing.
So it's the same, either way?
Yes, we would have still done the same thing.
Right, thanks.
Well, I commented, I invite anybody, I sat down and read this thing. If you have concerns about it, I invite everyone to sit down and read it. And I can tell you, I read it, I don't find anything odious in this. It just, it actually simplifies reading, you've got to begin to understand what the procedure is. And I don't think the provisions of the property code are more strict than what we're doing now. You know, I mean, you didn't really need to sit down and read this stuff. Don't make accusations about this terrible government thing, because this isn't it. You've got to sit down and read it. I suggest anybody who has a problem with this, read the darn thing. Because you're going to find out if really it makes sense, if things are, it makes sense. I just suggest that.
If a property owner has a situation where they have something today that's compliant and something that would not be compliant under the adoption of the code, how does that get handled? Let's say a stairwell. Or I noticed like fire pits was something that had a lot of detail on it. So how does something get handled that becomes noncompliant?
I'm going to defer that question to Dave. Have that happen every time?
Well, stairwells are kind of their own animal. They're hard to fix. What we would assume is if the stairwell had been built, that's kind of where we would go, whether it's under this code or whether we're in an apartment building, whether there's risers in commercials, seven or seven and a quarter, solid is what we would probably be looking for. So to go back in and try to modify a stair, if Dave's code, you know, gold stairwell, it's never going to work. You have to pretty much stick with what you've got. I mean, that's one example. I don't think we're trying to take this and make everything currently code. I think what we're looking for is safe structures.
Maybe that was the best example, but if you don't mind running through a couple more.
True.
What if I have a fire pit that wasn't compliant or was compliant, or at least I thought it was, and now it becomes noncompliant? What would the? I mean, is there any kind of grandfathering that's?
I think, and George isn't here to answer that, maybe Dennis does. But the big thing with a fire pit, whether it's homemade or not, our conversation with George researching this, a screen. And it's, I mean, he said a screen. We want to screen the top so we don't have ember spook around the neighborhood and start fences on fire and that type of thing. So, you've got a fire pit that doesn't have a screen? Find a screen, find something to put over the top of it and take care of it.
What kind of things would trigger it? Maybe you needed, those are good examples, but what? Maybe better examples of window situation or H X situation. But I'm trying to understand, because I spent, I'm not all the way read through it, but you're right, Jim, it deserves being read through. And I really appreciate the time all you guys have spent. I mean, it looks like we've got two things going on here to me. First, we've got the responsibility assignment for this and the procedures for handling it, which I think is out, I really appreciate the way that's all outlined. And I think the second topic here is this modernization of code that you guys have gone in and done a tremendous amount of analysis and customization on. But what I worry about is the new standard. And when I talk to people in Carney or Lincoln, those C P meetings, I hear this the most, when they adopted updated standards, people ran into very expensive situations. They were going to do a remodel, they were going to add on a room, or they were doing some type of project. And all of a sudden, a small project became a big project because they all of a sudden ran into this hornet's nest of things. And as I have been reading through and trying to understand all the differences, I think it is a lot more clear, but I do think there's an elevated level of standard in it from things I've looked at in that. I think there's some elevated level standard. It might not be as much as you consider imagining to be, but I think there is some elevated standards in what's proposed versus what we have in place, in my opinion. And so I'm just trying to understand how those differentials will work, what could trigger those, like an add-on or a remodel. And I think about all these unintended consequences we could have to deal with later.
I've heard a few horror stories from Carney. When they adopted it, they stripped it out of the code and they enforced it. I mean, word for word, strict, right out of the book, the way to do this. We took the time to sit there and change it and try to amend some of those things that we just didn't feel were reasonable. So that's one of the things. And when it comes to, I know we always keep a set of older codebooks because we do run into something, so they can kind of go back and look and see when it was built, did it meet? I don't feel like we're going to sit there and tell people, you know, well, it meant two years ago, but it doesn't mean now, so we're going to have to change it, put $20,000 into your place. That is not the intention at all. If it's safe and it's habitable, that's what we're going to work with.
What are the things that would trigger someone to have another inspection on an existing property? So what are all, what are the types of things that you would have to either permit otherwise on an existing property or would be in the home for some type of inspection on?
Well, the ones where we do quite a bit are gas appliance changes, furnace water heater. And I can tell you, most of the time, those two sit side by side in like a basement situation, not necessarily in crawl space. I've got the meter going and I'm checking a water heater, I'll check the furnace. If they've got a gas leak, I tell them. I don't charge them to do that. It's just, I found a gas leak, it's not on the appliance yet, put in, but obviously that's going to be a volatile situation, so. We're in the home for the, you know, those type of things, usually additions. And maybe not so much in the house, but in addition, just depends how they come through. If they came through an old patio door, we don't have to check a header, it may never be existing, it may just be.
Those would be things triggered under building permits?
Under building permits, but that's, Judy had addressed that a little bit. I mean, if we're in there looking at a water heater, unless the front door's falling off, we're not going to address the front door. I guess I look at it as a service of checking the water heater and I check the furnace and find a leak and tell them the water heater still passes, it was fine, but I at least told them they had a problem. Or if they had a rusty flue pipe or something along the line, I guess I try to just inform people about those kind of things. I don't know that I would come back here and write a letter and, you know, because most people are going to say, I've got to have a gas leak.
You would hope so.
And the next question I get is, who does that? I said, how do we get to put the water?
Councilman Lucas, if I may, I'm not 100% sure, but I would assume that if somebody is renovating their property and they're requesting a building permit, that's a different set of rules to play by in the International Property Maintenance Code. Now you're going to the International Building Code or the International Residential Code, in which case they have exceptions for renovations included in there. And David would clue those on a case by case basis.
If you're going to put an addition on your house, we don't go back in your bedrooms to make sure your egress window is five points seven square feet, 40, 14, or 15. Or I assume that's taken care of. So I'm not going to even go look at that in an addition situation, so.
Most things that are going to trigger this is a phone call from a renter, a phone call from a property owner, a phone call from Health and Human Services because they're taking care of an elderly person, things like that. Or it can, yeah, your neighbor. You know, and it can, if you happen to be out and you're looking at one property, you drive by and you see just this complete and horrible quarter mess. We may say, okay, we're going to look at the outside, let's go knock on the door and see if we can get an entry. But, you know, we're not going to be forcibly going to people's doors and saying, hey, let me in your house, I want to look and see what your house looks like.
Terry, how do you feel about enforcement that is where the staff is making a judgment on a safety condition and then deciding this code should be enforced in this situation or not?
But I do respect Ed's stance philosophically. But I also respect all the work that these folks have done and their area of expertise. If they tell me something's unsafe, I might be too disoriented, not right in judgment. But I can tell you that this will be far easier to enforce than what we had 30, 40 years ago. It's just vague.
It's just vague. It's subject to attack. This, put vagueness and the lack of specificity. This document is more modern. It has definite standards so that landlords know what they have to adhere to. But tenants know they can expect from a landlord, and what the city can enforce by looking back to a more definite standard. And it gets rid of, your concern about the subjectivity, if somebody comes on later and decides they're going to be more lenient and more strict, that is alleviated or at least lessened or diminished by a more specified standard. So the specificity in this document will make it a lot easier to enforce.
Thank you. I think everything was covered. If not, we'll certainly have more chances in the future. All right, we'll move on to item number six. The second reading action on ordinance number four zero three seven to rezonate certain land from A1 Transitional Agricultural District to an R3 dwelling district located at forty-one fourteen Victoria Lane on property described as tract land in the southeast quarter of section sixteen, township thirteen north, range thirty west of the sixth PM in Nebraska. Mayor Livingston, would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, please.
In ordinance of the city of North Flat, Lincoln County, Nebraska, rezoning a part of the east seven hundred feet of the southeast quarter of section sixteen, township thirteen north, range thirty west of the sixth PM, proposed Lot One, Panda Rosa, first subdivision, North Flat, Lincoln County, Nebraska, from an A1 Transitional Agricultural District to an R3 dwelling, repealing all ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
I'm going to wave the three required readings for ordinance number four thousand thirty-seven. Second. And, Aaron, do you want to just say why we're doing that, since you gave me the call yesterday for Terry? I'll give you some free PR time.
Aaron Vera, two twenty west force. The reason we're asking you guys to wave that third reading is because we sold that property to and their house has been purchased. And the city will not dig in the water main or to the house until it's waived, which means they can't live there. So we're just asking for that third reading, so they can have a nice home.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Now, move that we adopt ordinance for four thousand thirty-seven to rezonate certain land from an A1 Transitional Agricultural District to an R3 dwelling district located at forty-one fourteen Victoria Lane on property described as a tract of land in the southeast quarter of section sixteen, township thirteen north, range thirty west of the sixth PM in Nebraska.
Second.
And item number seven, we have a public carrying action on first reading ordinance number four zero four zero to accept and approve proposed renewal and revision of the Northwestern's agreement with the city of North Flat. Mayor Livingston, would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, please.
Hang on, this one's long. An ordinance of the city of North Flat, Lincoln County, Nebraska, granting Northwestern Corporation doing business as Northwestern Energy and Delaware Corporation its successors and assigns a non-exclusive franchise right and privilege for a period of fifteen years to erect, maintain, and operate the gas distribution system in any and all necessary pipes, mains, services, and all other appliances they're run to, pertaining in, upon, over, across, or along the streets, alleys, bridges, and places of the city of North Flat, Nebraska, as the same now are or may hereafter be extended for the transmission, distribution, and sale of gas, whether artificial, natural, or otherwise, for cooking, heating, industrial, and all other uses and purposes in the city of North Flat, Nebraska, and prescribing the terms and conditions under which said franchise is to operate, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance and publication in any form.
Oh, that's a question. Ask a question. So a lot of other communities across the state use a different supplier, they use Black Hills Energy. Did we do any kind of contacting just to make sure that we wanted to stay with or what's and be one of the very few communities in the state staying with them, or the service or rates or anything like that for the community, or do you just jump back, you know, here's a agreement, let's go with it?
Answer, Brett Barker. I didn't know if you wanted to. It's here on behalf, you have the title I would want.
Well, I believe that through B S U, we've got some representation.
Okay.
I would hope that they could, I think we've got quite a few people with more, more knowledge on this situation than I do. I will say that Northwestern has been in the community since the thirties. And I think we've got quite a reputation of serving our customers and working with the community. So I, I shouldn't maybe speak out loud, but I do know that in other communities, Black Hills rates are higher than ours. And I know that can be true in Carney, Nebraska, where we both inhabit the same location in town. So it's kind of a dual gas system in some locations, which is very problematic if you have underground leaks and other instances that can occur. But I don't know if you can access people that are on this.
May I just address your concern? This is not exclusive by drugs, so if you also want to be prepared, you know, practical that.
Yeah, I was about to ask, does, you know, them with all their already existing infrastructure and stuff like that, you know, essentially effectively block someone else from coming in, is what I thought too, or at least compete with them in the right of way?
I believe possibly the state of Nebraska adopted some rules pertaining to that when that happened to Carney. I may be speaking out of turn, but I, I believe that that was taken care of a few years back. But if someone wants to transport gas on our pipeline, we charge that fee. And we do have customers in town that purchase non-molecular gas.
I just want to make sure that we're, you know, not locking ourselves in and then there's, you know, not opportunities for consumers, I guess, in the future. I mean, no offense, but I know you guys have had financial issues in the past and stuff like that as a company and bankruptcies and stuff, so.
It's been quite some time.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, I just don't want to, I just want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a non-competitive advantage.
Once again, if there's someone on Zoom available for you to talk to, that would be people from High Park Creek. If you have questions, I know you can definitely get a hold of our legal counsel or anyone.
I have a copy of the legal counsel. What happened, the origin of this was this agreement they expect in nineteen ninety-five, been in place for twenty-five years. They were, pardon me.
They ran out of options, right?
I don't know. I don't know what the history was twenty-five years, but I just know that we were approached, Matt and I and Jim auctioned for that by the general counsel for Northwestern, not in Washington, saying, your agreement is about to expire. A lot of this is now governed by tariffs that are set by the Public Service Commission. So in state law, they have to go take a public service commission, regulates more proceeds. Frankly, that's something that we, we're too concerned about because Public Service Commission sets the tariffs, sets the rates. And if there's questions, everybody else has to apply by them. Oh, we did. And they were very easy to work with, like three, line by line by line. Just chain and modernize, brought it up for twenty-five years. But you know, since I'm on my, I want to go to the legal counsel. And I want to begin with the legal counsel and their couple of regional directors. This is, this is the end agreement. It's not, it's not exclusive. We didn't split up. If you want to do that, then.
It's fine. I mean, I understand it's not exclusive. I just want to make sure we're, we're effectively locking ourselves in. So, you know, like, hey, we own all the equipment here and everything else, and if you can't add equipment in the right of ways, you know what I mean? Like, there's always so much room and that kind of stuff. Okay. I don't know how D.C. natural gas lines works, so I just want to make sure we're aware. But I mean, if there's plenty of room or someone else wants to move into town, try to heat them as well. Here are just one comment I'll make. Glenn and I were serving on the chamber board about the same time developing corporation board when these issues came up, but I know when North Flat had just opportunities to pitch on new businesses, especially high gas users, that we've always been equal or greater in terms of competitiveness and always had good collaboration on the economic, health side and service side of that direction too. So I know from the time I spent six, seven years, I spent that, that role, that Northwestern's always seen as a, as a very positive economic, health partner in those situations. Yeah, and then I think they help us with the fund, the economic fund, that kind of complements our, our quality growth fund as well.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with our franchise agreement.
This is a public carry, so maybe we should ask if anyone from the public would like to speak. If not, we can call the public carry and then we can chit chat as much as we want.
Motion to close public carry.
Second.
I now move that we accept and approve of this first reading renewal and revision of Northwestern's agreement with the city of North Flat.
I remember, hey, would you be pleased, motion to pay the claim?
Second.